Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. This Oklahoma County Jail Advisory Committee, special meeting, scheduled for today, September 19th, 2017, at 3:00 PM. So the meeting is called to order. All are present. Notice of the meeting was properly posted on Friday, September 8th. Item number three, discussion and/or possible action to approve the minutes from the special meeting of last Tuesday, September 12th, 2017. Are there any changes that need to be made to the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Move to for a second.
Of a motion and a second, is there any discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from September 12th, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And the motion carries three zero. Okay, item number four, which is the discussion and possible action regarding the proposed jail trust authority document that was received back at the end of June 2017. Gentlemen, I don't know how you'd like to proceed. I think maybe the best way is just kind of starting at the beginning and working your way through the documents. And if there are any changes, questions, points of discussion, you know, in the various paragraphs as we work through it page by page, then we can just take this up as we go. Does that sound like a good plan?
Yes. I mean, I will have to leave around four o'clock, so.
Well, we better get rolling. Okay. The very first item that I would bring up for consideration is the actual name of the authority. As currently written, if we just look at the title, it's Creating Oklahoma County Criminal Justice System Authority. For the purposes of, you know, I'm all thinking in acronyms, I would recommend deleting the word "system," so it would just be the Oklahoma County Criminal Justice Authority, the OCCJA, as opposed to the OCCJSIA. I don't think much is really lost by omitting the word "system." Of course, that would also change then in that first paragraph, and there'd be a few other places in the document where it's actually spelled out. Article two, on page two. Article three, under definition. So that is my thought typically, the way that we do things is we kind of do our discussion and questions first before we actually entertain a motion. Anybody have any strong opinions about deleting the word "system" from the name Oklahoma County Criminal Justice System Authority?
OCCJA rolls up the tongue better.
Is that, aye? Okay, there are no questions, then I'll move to amend the name from Oklahoma County Criminal Justice System Authority. It's Oklahoma County Criminal Justice Authority. And that would be throughout the document, including but not limited to top of page one, the first paragraph of page one, article two on page two, definitions on page two, the second paragraph of definition. I believe those are the only places, at least, that I've combined it, but for the purposes of the motion, I don't think we need to specifically outline all of them. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those, any discussion or debate? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Passes three zero. Matthew, whoop. I'm trying to take Kopeius' notes as well until we can get together on all the changes and things that are made to make sure that we get the document in final form. Any other items for discussion, changes, modifications, questions related to page one of the working document?
Well, I had concern on the last paragraph. The undersigned "trust hereby, forever, irrevocably." I don't necessarily know what we need "forever, irrevocably." I think "conveys" would be sufficient. And remove "relinquish," "conveys" and "assigns" to the trustees.
I had that same thought. It did seem a bit extreme, although again, I think the way it's worded is because of, while the trust is in existence, they wanted to make sure that it was clear that it had that authority. But I would entertain a motion to amend. What's the, what's your motion?
To remove "forever" and "irrevocably" from the first sentence in the second paragraph under article one, creation of trust, and also remove the word "relinquishes" in the same sentence.
The motion is to remove the words "forever," "irrevocably," and "relinquishes" in the first line of section paragraph, article one, page one, so it would read the undersigned "trust hereby conveys and assigns to the trustees of the authority," so on and so forth. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion or debate? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then opposed. Motion carries three zero. All right, pitched. I have none other than those we've already talked about and approved, related to the Any other items for discussion on page two? Okay, seeing none. Page three?
I've got a couple of additions on page three.
Yes, sir.
Paragraph one, about in the middle of where it talks about beneficiaries, law enforcement. I know that we have talked about it being all in time to see, but I'm not really clear if we want to get into the law enforcement that right below that, talks about juvenile corrections, then the sentence, second sentence below that, we've got law enforcement again in there.
And then it's also down in.
Right, yeah.
Subparagraph A.
Exactly.
Subnotations that I think should be removed as well.
So my motion would be, page three, paragraph one, third sentence, remove economic resources and powers, and the sentence may need to be restructured if I remove that.
I'm sorry.
That was another I had, but I don't need to talk about. Let's go to sentence, to line one, two, three, four, five, six. Line seven, talks about beneficiaries, law enforcement. I would like to strike that. Following line.
Then that strike would also include striking of the common.
Right, okay.
Correct.
Yes, to the criminal justice jail. The immediate line below that, strike in juvenile corrections, then skip the line, the following line.
One second, would that not be adult and then strike "in juvenile corrections and detention," and then it would just say, or, in the, to the "and," strike "in" to "and," so it would say adult detention facilities?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, yeah. Yeah, I'm just keying on the word, but yeah, we're going to probably have to restructure the sentence like it said. And then the second line below the juvenile corrections, law enforcement is in there again. We would strike that where it would just read jail, prisons, correctional detention, justice, and related facilities. And then still on page three, subparagraph A, one, two, three, the fourth line, where it says "law enforcement." I would like to strike that, and that would read of any type or description, including but not limited to those for, strike the comma, also after "law enforcement, administrative, criminal justice, medical, social services, et cetera, et cetera."
So strike "law enforcement" and the comma?
Right.
Okay. So the motion is, starting in line seven of article four, paragraph one, delete the words "law enforcement" and the comma following, so it would read to the beneficiary, criminal justice. And then on the next line, to delete "and juvenile corrections and," so it would read adult detention facility. And then on line 10, to delete "law enforcement," so that it would read correctional detention, justice, and related facilities. And then in subpart A of paragraph one, to delete "law enforcement," so it would read those for administration, criminal justice, aspects. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, with the motion, do I have a second?
Well, if I could, since we're in that same area, I mean, I could go ahead and second all of those, or I could present a friendly amendment to that motion.
I have a few changes on this page two, so we could just take them all up as one motion, but I don't want to, I mean, again, if it's one of minor type graphicals, so I don't think it really matters if it's substantive or type graphical.
Well, it goes into, it's substantive, but it goes into exactly what he was talking about on the juvenile, you had, and you may have purposely not mentioned it, but there is also.
I should not have mentioned that.
Juvenile up here.
Yeah.
First sentence, "to promote, finance, and develop jail, prison, and correctional facilities for the temporary or longer-term detention or incarceration of adult or juvenile males and females together with related facilities." You know what, though? If we left juvenile in that particular sentence, we do have youthful offenders that are juveniles down there, so it probably would still be appropriate to leave juvenile in that sentence. Answer my question.
So there's no.
With the help of a nod from Mr. Honey.
There's no amendment to the amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All the, are there any, any discussion or debate or question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero.
I do have a question on that subparagraph A. If we remove juvenile in law enforcement aspects, which we have, that final sentence says, "facilities relating to, in support, or of, or operated in conjunction with said jail, prison, and correctional facilities of any type or description." So I want to make sure that we're clear that this is talking about the adult detention facility and not any detention facility in the county.
I think it's talking, I mean, the way that I read that, if we look at just the immediately preceding language, where it talks about medical, social service, recreational facilities, food handling, things of that nature, I read those together to say, we're just talking about anything that would be related to the functioning of a detention facility. I suppose that's open to interpretation, but that's.
Well, it talks about jail, prison, and correctional facilities of any type or description. So I want to make sure if we, our intention is to remove the juvenile facility from this, that I.
Would you say I'm subscribed here in?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Second motion. So the motion, the second would be to insert the words "as described here in," the very end of the last sentence, subpart A, paragraph one, article four. The motion is second, any discussion or debate?
Well, if we, if we did that, as mentioned here in, could we not just substitute that for the language of any type or description, so it's say jail, prison, and correctional facilities? And then.
And just delete?
Yeah.
Okay.
You would. Well, no, I, it would, we would still have the, the language that you mentioned, as mentioned here in, but that would be a substitute for of any type or description, not in conjunction with.
So the motion is to delete the language of any type or description and replace with "as described here in."
That is correct.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion or debate? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously, three zero. I have three typographical changes to this page. First one being paragraph one, line 11, which starts "otherwise promote," it reads "otherwise promote the general welfare of the citizens," missing the word "of" between "welfare" and "citizens." Further, subpart A, when it reads "incarceration of adult or juvenile males and females together with related facilities." I think it would be clear if we put a comma after the word "females," so we're not talking about housing males and females together necessarily. It could be that way. Males and females, comma, together with related facilities. And then finally, typographical change would be in subpart C of paragraph one, to promote, finance, and develop, it reads "commercial and projects or facility," I believe it's missing the word "other" in front of "project," so it would read "develop commercial and other projects or facilities related to said jail facilities." This would be the three, three, some scrims, errors on page three. Any questions, discussion, or debate? I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, with the motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, passes three zero. All the changes here. Page four.
I move to strike paragraph E. It sounds extremely like law enforcement, to administer a system and administer funds for a system of maintaining, operating, and conducting criminal justice intervention and prevention programs.
Okay, there are two paragraph Es, that's why I was.
Oh, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the first paragraph.
The first, well, that just solves our next problem, then.
We don't have to relit.
Right, okay. So the suggestion would be to administer, okay, to delete the first subpart E, to administer system, administer funds for system, maintain, operate, conducting criminal justice intervention and prevention programs. Is there any questions relating that, related to that suggestion? Okay, the motion is to delete, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is second, any discussion or debate? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries three zero.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go up to the one and only paragraph D.
I'm with you.
And we need to, there's two different ways we can clean it up. Administer funds for the purpose of acquiring aside for jail, prison, and adult correctional facilities for the temporary or longer-term detention or incarceration of adults, and possibly strike or juveniles in any related facilities.
I had taking juveniles out of that, but do, if we, if we take that out, the youthful offenders that are there, that could affect that. When you mentioned adding adult in front of correctional facilities, I think that actually fixes the problem better than taking juveniles out by adding that.
That's how you talk about the.
Yeah, it's spelled out that we're talking about the adult.
Got you.
Correctional facility.
Might I also recommend that we add after the words "and slash or," so we're not talking about all of those things, but any one of them, jail, prison, and/or correctional facility. Not that we're necessarily going to be in the business of building prison versus a jail, but I just think that would clarify. So the motion therefore would be to add slash or after the word "and" first line, subpart D, and then second line to insert before the word correctional, the word "adult." Were there any deletions that we needed to make to part D?
I'm good. Do you think it would be more clear, the intent of the document, if the areas that mention juveniles, we are mentioning solely the juveniles that are at the adult detention facility, if we substituted the term youthful offenders instead of juveniles? Would that, maybe splitting hairs or?
Again, I think youthful offender would be, would be more proper of the term. I mean, the youthful offenders. Because there are different definitions statutorily of juvenile?
I guess we could add a definition section, or add a definition in the definition section for juveniles, and say juveniles are youthful offenders sentenced to or spending time at Oklahoma County adult detention facilities.
We could, I mean, that's, whatever you prefer. I, I think a blanket motion to change the word, or any reference to juvenile or juveniles to youthful offender or youthful offenders.
That would be my preference.
Mine too.
Okay. Would that be sufficient, do you think, as far as the non-adults that are at the Oklahoma County Jail, would they be?
I'm not sure that it would.
For clarity purposes, do you?
Well, there might also be other categories of juvenile. That, you know, the juvenile that certifies the adult, not a school. It's true. Right, that was kind of my concern, so it might be better to go ahead and leave the term juveniles, and then in the definition section, define juveniles as minors sentenced or spending time at the adult detention facility. That would encompass all of them, I believe. We can come back to that.
We can do it right now. Put your drafting hat on.
Yes, I don't know exactly what.
Well, we'll send it to the staff council. Or that's you.
It's you.
I'm the chairman. So, yeah, that's, any wordsmithing ideas from the audience? Of how to define juveniles, because again, I just don't want it crossways with any of the various statutory definitions. So it would go after indenture, I'm on page two. Juvenile or juveniles, I'm drafting out loud here by committee, shall mean. In custody, yeah, I don't know, would you say held at, or in custody of any adult Anyone?
Beaver.
I should say a minor being held at.
An adult detention facility.
An adult detention facility.
Permit by law. Permit under the law.
I'm always happy to put that in there. It'd be your motion, so. If you'd like to phone a friend.
Name my LRW professor.
You're right. He's rejected your friendly amendment. So juvenile or juvenile shall mean a minor being held at an adult detention facility. Fair enough?
That's my motion.
Okay, motion, it would be inserted as a definition after indenture, article two, page two. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion, or debate? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That also passes, three zero. Okay, are there any other changes to page four, other than those already discussed or approved? Okay, seeing none, page five. We have a stray quotation mark at the end of paragraph seven, and I'd like to thank Doug Enid Holson from the clerk's office for pointing that out to me. So I would move to delete the stray quotation mark at the end of the last sentence of paragraph seven. A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I did feel really lonely. Everybody's up.
Approved. Anything else on page five? All right, page six. Anybody else have quite a few on this one?
Yes.
Well, would you like to start? Or I, I can tell you right off the bat, one of the things that I would like for the committee to consider as a recommendation is changing the term of the appointed trustees to four years as opposed to three years, so that it is coterminous with whoever the official trustee is that appoints. I tried different suggested amendments as far as, well, commissioner appoints someone, they serve a three-year term, they turn off, then they appoint somebody that serves for a year, although it should be a three-year term. When the new commissioner comes in, I think they should have the right to make new appointments. So we might have people that are only serving that one-year term, or they'd be stuck with an appointment for at least two years if they didn't make. Anyways, I tried to play with the language without giving the commissioners authority to reappoint or appoint new ones upon first taking office. Anyway, the conclusion that I came to is it would just be easier to do four-year terms that are coterminous. Again, district one and three are elected on the same cycle, district two and sheriff are elected on the same cycle, so you would have, if all of the numbers or all of the members stuck, exactly like we have it written out, at most four turning off at one time and three continuing on. So it's not a full-on seven new people.
Well, I, I think what's, it sounds like what started your concern was somebody coming into office, being able to make sure that they have their, their appointee and not stuck with somebody else's appointee, which could present a problem. In a perfect world, doing it with four-year terms to run consecutively with the elected official, in a perfect world, would solve that problem. However, in a situation like we had this year, where the sheriff resigned midterm, you still have that issue, Mr. Taylor was elected here recently, and he would be stuck with until that term finished out. So if the concern is to make sure that an elected official can remove the appointee upon their election and appoint their own appointee, we may want to consider that. I mean, I said, I'm not necessarily opposed to four-year terms versus three-year or anything, but, and I'm with you, I looked at language to try to rectify that, and it's not the easiest to come up with, but I just mentioned that because if you're wanting to maul that.
No, I think that needs to be addressed. I'm trying to figure out where we would insert that. One of the changes that I have would be, we're looking kind of. we're looking kind of in the middle of this paragraph, talking about the other trustees or the appointed trustees shall serve terms of, I would recommend, four years and shall be citizens of the beneficiary, one of each of whom is appointed by one of the county commissioners, of whom shall be confirmed by the Board of County Commissioners. And then I would insert language, comma, and shall serve terms coterminous with the terms of his or her appointing official. We'd like to get called during this. Anyway, I would just mirror the language I have earlier. That just said would be coterminous term. But we need to then supply the language that says.
All right, what about something that the appointed members serve at the pleasure of their appointing elected official and may be removed in another person appointed in their place at the direction of that elected official?
Yes, let's take up two different motions. You have what you just said.
I'm sure it's recorded.
Okay. Let's do this first. Okay, I would make the following motion. Number one. Article seven, paragraph one, we're on page six. Line six. Starting with the word county commissioners or Oklahoma County Sheriff shall, we need to insert the word and before shall. It reads, because the way it reads now, as elected officials and their successors as Oklahoma County Commissioners, Oklahoma County Sheriff shall on the contact in the office, comma, but without any further act, the conveyance automatically become. And in order to read properly, shall serve terms. Successors. The word and needs to be inserted. As part of. Okay, the next would be line eleven. Starting with the word trustees, shall serve terms of four years as opposed to three. The same change would be included on line fourteen at the very end of that line. And then on line sixteen. Delete the word balance and replace it with the word the. So it would read, upon resignation of an appointed trustee's successor shall be appointed for the remaining portion as opposed to for balance remaining portion of. And then insert the word the before unexpired. Replace the word three with four on that line. I missed one, I'm sorry guys. If you go back up to line thirteen. Beginning with whom shall be confirmed by the Board of County Commissioners. As part of my motion, I would also replace that period with a comma and insert the following. And shall serve terms coterminous with the terms of his or her appointing official. And then finally, the third line from the bottom of paragraph one, there's an extra period after the word herein that I would move, we delete.
Is it one too many or one too few? Dot, dot, dot?
Don't confuse me with your logic at this point. I know that was very lengthy, let me go over that again. Essentially, we just need to insert the word and before shall on the sixth line. Change all of the three years to four years. Add a couple of the above. Delete an extra period. And then insert language that shows that the appointees of the official, elected official trustees, that their terms are coterminous with that of their appointing official. Questions?
I think on that one, I'm fine with rewording and modifying that entire paragraph, but there's so much that needs to be done. I don't think I can sit here and say, yes, I agree with that or no, I don't. I think I need to see that in writing and then we can.
Well, and I agree with Cody. I think if we do that, we're going to have to add some other language also as far as if we think it should go into paragraph one under Article Seven, Article Chief Deputy. You know, to sit in for the commissioner.
I have that as an additional paragraph twelve at the end of Article Seven. I thought that would be the easiest way to do it. That would be page eight just before you start Article Eight. And I have drafted or proposed language to include.
You've got to add it.
Right.
Okay.
Here's what I would say. I mean, and I think for me, I mean, I can't, until I read the document in its entirety with all the changes, I don't anticipate making a motion or seconding a motion today to make a recommendation. I want to see everything changed. So I'm fine with making a broad motion in this paragraph to allow you or someone to make certain changes to the paragraph to be included in whatever the changes are. And then if we need to make supply modifications, it would be much easier to make supply modifications next time then. Because these are all major.
Sure.
And lots of them.
Well, let's go ahead and take up this motion, should it receive a second. Because essentially, I mean, I can explain it that we're just changing the terms from three to four years and making them coterminous. And then I would like to at least have you make your motion that we talked about to insert language that addresses the issue of when there's a resignation, something like that, unavailability. There's language that already talks about a resignation of an appointee. But not resignation of a trustee such as, you know what happened with our sheriff several months ago. But I think that, just to get a point that you make, and we can insert a line. And I think that's also a fair point that once we incorporated all of these amendments, that does come before the committee again for review, just to make sure that we have everything before then it's put up on the document. So are you okay then with at least proceeding with the motion that I've made so we can incorporate that language? You'll have a chance to see it again before we make any sort of recommendations? Because I don't know that, and the reason I say is I don't know that we can just entertain a motion to direct the chairman to go rewrite this paragraph.
I think we could. With some, because it's not going to be officially. It's, yeah, it won't be officially approved. I mean, I think we could, I would be comfortable making a motion to allow the chair, which you've made some great points, some stuff that needs to be changed that, and it would be easier since you're the one that's kind of looked at that, for you to make changes to that paragraph to allow the appointee's terms to run coterminous with the trustee that appointed them and to insert language that would allow the trustee upon a new trustee coming into elected office to be able to appoint a new appointee. And you can draft that language in there next time when we meet. We can look at it and if we want to make any changes to the draft, we can do it at that time.
Perfect.
I would just like to make sure that all the changes we want to make, we make them today and then Randy or whoever drafts it, you know, to our twenty, we could see it. And I mean, I know that we can look at it and modify it before we recommend it to the board. But, you know, I'd like to, like you were saying, do it all in one piece and then we can look at it.
Unfortunately, we only have about seventeen minutes left.
Yeah, I think it's, in this paragraph, I think there's just so many changes and, I mean, you know, that one comma, you know, out of place or whatever can change the meaning. I think this one's really important to really pay attention to the wordsmithing and with me not being able to see it, I mean, it's just, it's really difficult. I think you could submit the changes for that or all of the changes to the clerk's office ahead of our next meeting and the clerk's office could provide it to the three of us and we could, you know.
Absolutely.
Look at it ahead of time that way when we're in the next meeting. If we need to make some minor revisions to this one paragraph, we could do that and not have to come back again.
Okay, so do I understand your motion correctly? It's to direct the chair to revise or amend with relation to changing three-year terms to four-year terms, making the terms of the appointee trustees coterminous with the official trustees and also to draft and add language allowing the appointment of the new trustees upon a change in elected official upon resignation and things of that nature. Is that correct?
Correct.
We have second?
I would like to look more into this, if I may.
Sure.
In reading the document, it talks about each successor appointed trustee shall be selected by the commissioner from the same district. And I haven't found it maybe in there, but are there any clarification on who the commissioners can select? Can they select a mayor, can they select a councilman? In some of the language I've read, it indicates that they can't be elected officials. So I don't know if that's something we need to address before we go into this draft.
It's a great point. The only qualification, if you will, is that they reside in Oklahoma County. They do not even have to be a member of the specific district that's represented by the legislature. Also, that was one of the recommendations of Mr. Simonson out of Tulsa County was to not appoint other elected officials. However, that's not outlined in this document and so that's something that we could pick up for discussion now.
Does the statute address that?
I think it does.
At what time?
Yeah, the Title Sixty does not allow appointed members to be elected officials other than the sheriff and the Board of County Commissioners. So kind of getting to what Mr. Brooks said the other day, we could make it unambiguous and put terminology in there that says appointees shall not be elected officials. But if we don't have that language in there, the law is still going to require that any appointee is not an elected official.
See, in language terms, I guess, and I understand because Mr. Brooks said if we put it in there that no elected official will be there and they change the statute, we got to change our language. But I would, personally, I would rather do that so it's very clear and transparent in our trust that trustees can't be elected officials.
Well, trustees will be. Appointees.
I'm sorry, appointees.
Yeah.
Well, we have official trustees and appointing trustees essentially the way that.
Right.
Yeah, I'm with you. From the same district, which one prior, okay. So, just out of the way, I think we would include that language. Where was the provision about? Where they have to be from? Okay, shall serve terms of four years, shall be citizens of the beneficiary, shall not be an elected official. Again, that would be mayors, councilmen, dog catchers, things of that nature. One of each whom is appointed by one of the county commissioners. Do you consider that a friendly amendment to your amendment?
I do.
Okay. Without objection, I'll be the one. Okay. Any other changes?
Other than the chief deputy language, were you wanting to include that somewhere else or in this paragraph?
Must include that on page eight.
Okay, all right. Then no other changes.
Discussion, debate, questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, three, zero. Any changes on page seven? Have none. Page eight. I have two. I'll just address the first one quickly. It's typographical, paragraph ten, in the middle, starting with the line certified with an unqualified opinion of an independent, comma, certified public accountant, period. That word should be accountant. And then the other part of my motion would be to add a paragraph twelve, which would read, in the absence of, I said ex officio, I want to use that language. In the absence of an elected official trustee from a meeting of the trust or otherwise, according to nineteen O S. Section one eighty point eight one, comma, as amended and supplemented and other applicable statutes that state presently in force in effect, comma, the official trustee, chief deputy or undersheriff shall have authority to act as trustee, period. Questions, discussion, debate? Seeing none, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, three, zero. Any changes to page nine? Page ten. Page eleven? Page twelve? Page thirteen?
Just on, okay, only one maybe. This number that I do have issue on, paragraph thirty-one.
Okay.
The second to last sentence, so we one, two, three, four, five, six, beginning on the seventh line. They may compromise and settle any suit or action and discharge the same out of assets of the trust and venture together with court costs and attorney fees. I think that any decision to compromise and settle suits should come back to the Board of County Commissioners.
About the last sentence, Cody, all such expenditures shall be paid as expenses in the executing's authority with as still be needed. We just ended before, you know, the information was dry.
Yeah, yeah. No, because I think the expenditures to defend a suit or whatever else that's above, I think they can be paid for out of the authority. But I do think that, I mean, any.
So instead of deleting that, would you be open to?
I'm open to.
Actually rewriting so that it specifically says something to the effect, however, any compromise and settle or settlements.
Must be approved by the Board.
Of any suit or action, discharge the same out of the assets. Well, formative to the assets of the trust to state. Okay, well, so we could leave it as is and add a sentence that says, however, any compromise or settlement of any suit or action, discharge of the same out of assets other than from the trust to state shall be solely within the or within the exclusive.
I mean, I guess this gets back to what are we doing? What title is going to be moved to the trust to state? Because if it's merely. Because if it's merely findings that's flowing into the trust of state, the trustees are the ones that are going to be responsible for that, so, I mean, I guess I'm fine with it.
I mean, the question I would have, again, if we're talking about somebody who's a detainee that serves, has been in the jail for a couple of days, and then makes some sort of claim that the watch they came in with was lost and not returned to them, would that still be the type of claim that would need to be approved by the board of county commissioners, or could that be approved by the trust?
Those are the types of issues that I'm concerned about, that, and if there's, you know, if the, if the trust authority is, you know, brought into a lawsuit on, you know, somebody gets in a fight, it's a medical issue, something like that, who's going to be authorized to settle those types of suits? But if we're talking about merely the assets of the trust of state, I guess, I mean, that's, that is limiting.
It is.
So.
And we could add the word solely or exclusively, to kind of hammer home the point.
Yeah.
That it's limited to the assets of the trust of state.
Yeah.
Where would you like to add that? Discharge the thing solely out of assets of the.
Trust.
Out of assets.
Is that a dangling participle, as we put it there?
It is.
Same out of assets solely of the trust of state? Or, same out of assets of the trust of state solely or exclusively? What is there at the end?
Same out of the exclusive assets of the trust of state.
Second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion, debate? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, three zero, to add the word exclusive before the word assets, line eight, paragraph thirty-one, page thirteen, page fourteen. Any changes, recommendations, questions, comments?
One thing, I think we do need to be careful of, paragraph two, the beneficiary shall have no legal title, claim of rights to the trust of state, which I understand what that's getting at, but we do need to be really careful as we're going through this on what, what is changing hands, you know, from a title aspect, who owns what, and who doesn't own what.
I pause as well in analyzing the document at that, just to make sure what that said, and, I mean, essentially, it's just that it's either in one or the other.
Right.
Fair enough. Page fifteen? Okay. So, that being said, it appears that the committee does not, at this point, wants to take any action to make the recommendation to the board of county commissioners, but instead would like to review and analyze the document with the amendments that have been made today, is that fair?
That would be my preference.
Okay, so essentially, then, we'll just carry over item four to another agenda for more discussion and review and possible action, correct?
Correct.
Anything else on item four? Item five, citizen participation, are there any citizens wishing to participate? Seeing none? Item six, board comments. District one?
No.
District two?
No, thank you.
District three, we're doing business with you as usual. Item seven, affirmative of the motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, three zero.